Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Public Works Finance Committee of the Moscow City Council. Meeting on Monday, August 25. To my right, Councilmember Dan Carskellon. To my left, Art Betke, Councilmember. To his left, Gary Redner, the city supervisor. And I'm Walter Steed, City Council President. The first item of business is approval of the August 11, 2014 minutes. And you have been handed a one that was adjusted from the one that was in the packet. And also, reapproval of the July 28, 2014 minutes. The reason for the reapproval is that someone, in their wisdom, decided the chairman of these committees needed to sign the minutes. The first time I was asked to do that, I just signed it. The second time, I thought I'd really read them and made a few changes. So, those are before you for approval.
With the changes, I'm okay with approving them.
I'm okay with the second set. I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I can't comment on that one.
And I'm okay with all of it, so we'll consider them approved. Stephanie?
I'll come back later.
Item number two. Tom Grundon to talk about the Hamilton Low Aquatics Center parking lot repair project that is fixing to occur, I think.
Thank you, Chairman Steed. City staff for the last couple of years has been observing the parking lot outside the H-LAC, certain areas of it failing. And as a result, city staff recommended and the city council approved a budget item for this year of $49,000 to make repairs at the said parking lot. We went out to bid, received three bids on August 15 with a low bid from Motley Motley in the amount of, sorry, $38,291.30. Projects calls for the removal and installation of approximately 830 square yards of asphalt concrete pavement, including installation. And then we would reinstall four-inch perforated subsurface drain pipes, upgrade separation geotextile fabric, and crush rock base in the parking lot areas. So that would remove and replace several different sections of the parking lot that are currently failing. And would be done here at the end of September, first part of October, after the close of the pool for the season. And the parking lot will still be accessible throughout the duration of the construction City staff at the completion of the project will then restripe the parking lot where the work will be done. And we're currently funded at $49,000 for the repair work in the budget. And as such, not knowing completely the scope or condition of the subsurface out there, we may have additional areas to repair or put additional drain tile in there because we have a lot of weeping water that comes up out of the ground and has caused some of the damage there. So that was the reason for the request for up to a 25% in change order allowance per year approval.
With the city's luck on the last several projects at what they find under asphalt in this town, I hope 25% is enough.
What happens if it's not?
He'll be back.
He'll be back. I was looking, expecting, and don't think we have a map of what areas are being done. It's not the entire swimming pool parking lot, is it, Tom?
No, not at all. It's, and it was in your packet in the booklet, but it's right down the middle of it, Walter, and certain area to the south. And then there's a long three-foot area up on the north side, too, that's failing. So all the areas that are marked with the red crosshairs are the areas contemplated for repair.
Okay.
So no new asphalt going up out there where there's gravel, where there's currently gravel?
That's correct. This is only replacing existing areas that are failing.
And all basically right in front of the pool?
That's correct.
Does anyone have any idea why that barely wide strip on the north side is failing? What is that, four feet wide?
It's about three feet wide.
Three feet wide and almost the entire east-west length of the lot?
Correct.
Anybody out here, have any idea why? Someone told me one time, if nobody says anything, just wait, and somebody eventually will.
I don't have the answer to that, but we'll probably know when we excavate it.
Okay.
So there's probably...
It's unusual to see something like that, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. But based on, as you mentioned, what we found at Mountain View Park with asphalt right over clay subgrade, we'll see when we get there.
You're never surprised anymore, are you?
No.
Okay. What are your wishes, gentlemen?
I'm okay with going ahead and forwarding this. As said before, you know, is 25% enough? Probably, hopefully. If not, Tom will be back, so I'd look forward to approval.
Yep, and I'm good with the two.
Consider agenda, Gary?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And with your permission, I'd like to give a shout-out, if I may.
Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to thank Scott Bontrager and Kevin Lilly and Jason Lefley of the Engineering Department for just being a great asset to the Parks Division. So it's great to have a nice team to work together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, I suspect he's buying coffee the next time you all go out together. Okay, next item is a monumentation agreement, Ridgeview Second Edition subdivision. Ron Crumley is bringing this to us. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The developer of the Ridgeview Second Edition subdivision is preparing to file his plat with the county recorder's office once we're done with our review. The requirement, the state requires all interior and exterior monuments of all plats be in place at the time their plat is recorded. In order to avoid losing most of the interior corners during construction, the state also allows for only the exterior monuments to be set and the interior monuments to be set at a later date, normally within one year, to keep those monuments from being destroyed. The only, the only way that's allowed is if there's an agreement in place, and in this case it'd be with the city, and the deposit is presented by the developer to cover the cost of setting those corners at a later date. This is our standard monumentation agreement we do with all subdivisions. Nothing out of the ordinary, so, if you guys have any questions.
Just one quickie. The one-year timeframe, is that from the date of the plat or from the date of the start of construction?
It's usually the date of recording the plat. And if there needs to be an extension, they also allow extensions to set that date even farther back if they need to.
Is it, following up on that, it strikes me that quite often that one-year timeframe is not met because plats are recorded and construction isn't started sometimes for a year, too. Is that, I mean, I understand that maybe better than the requirement that they be set within a year when the construction hadn't been done yet. Salisbury's whatever addition, I think, has been platted for quite a while. The market conditions have not led to constructing it. There may be some others. Are we creating a rule, Gary, or somebody that really, under ordinary circumstances, might not be met? Or is that state code, and we don't have any choice but to write it this way?
State code requires the monumentation, the one year. The one year is in there so that it doesn't go too long before they're done. If it is delayed, then we do bring extensions back in. But the idea is to have them set as soon as possible. So it does cause a little more work if they aren't done exactly when the subdivider thinks they will be done. However, it allows us to essentially be assured that they're going to be put in in a reasonable period of time.
Which is what we want.
You bet.
Could we not, what if we made it a shorter period of time that pegged it to construction in some fashion?
I suppose you could do that. I guess I would rather see council delegate the monumentation agreements to the city engineer. City engineer then could enter into them without bothering the council with the detail and then could monitor the progress and extend those as necessary. And that's something, if you're interested, we could bring to you if you'd like.
Well, this doesn't come back to this level when there's an extension, does there? I mean, is that with the engineering department? I can't remember any...
I don't remember an extension.
Any extensions that have come to here, so that's kind of how we work right now?
Must be. I can't remember, to tell you the truth. I'm not aware of any that have been extended that were brought back in.
We're just gonna keep asking questions till we got a "don't know" out of you.
Well, you can keep asking. Well, it's one of those processes, it's a pretty lockstep process, so...
So why do we need to see these?
You don't.
If it's by statute, we have never said no.
I don't want any monuments.
Well, the idea was that any contract that's brought through is brought to council unless it's very minor. This because it involves real property and a subdivider. We brought them to you, but we'd be happy to have that delegated to staff.
I think it'd be a good idea because it's routine housekeeping agreements.
Okay, well, why don't we, we can certainly add that perhaps in a future, just bring the policy to you, and you guys can let us know if you'd like to proceed with that.
I guess, Mike, how many monuments are we talking for this entire subdivision?
I couldn't give you the number.
Does it, I mean, is it tied to how many lots there are, or how does that work?
Well, the exterior monuments, which defines the boundary of the plat, they have to be set by law. The interior monuments are each lot corner, and depending on how many lots they have...
Plus center lines of curves in the streets and all that?
Right.
Okay, so there's several. I mean, it's not just a, once these certain houses get built, then we can be done. It's, each one basically has to be mine.
The agreement is set for the entire subdivision to be done at once.
And with, once everything's done, basically, because you couldn't just piecemeal it in, it doesn't seem like it. It'd be more expensive than the 2100 bucks.
It's up to the developer and the surveyor. If he wants to come in and set the pins that have already, the lots have already been built on, he's able to do that.
I'm okay with moving this forward, just like every other one.
Me, too, with the stipulation.
Let's look into it.
Okay, okay. Consider agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tyler Palmer has come back from vacation, or wherever he went, and he's gonna talk about a right-of-way trimming policy.
Yes, gentlemen, thank you. I think you'll recall, we were here before this committee previously to discuss our right-of-way trimming. I can recap the program as much or as little as you'd like me to, the basics of the program as it's...
Recap what we were doing, what brought up the question. So, and your thought process and how you got to where you are.
We have our annual trimming process in which we go out, we take one area of the city, we notify, based on some feedback from residents, we started notifying in the fall and then also, so people would have a full season to do the trimming as appropriate. We come back in the spring, notified two weeks prior to the trimming. And we wanted to get this in policy so that it was something that we had, that the council had had a chance to have a look at, and so we had that back up. At that time, the committee gave us the direction that they wanted to see an option presented for payment, a payment option. There is an expenditure of funds by the city to make this happen.
Payment by the property owner.
By the property owner, by the adjacent property owner for the trimming that is conducted. So we went back to take a look at what that might look like, and that's what we're doing back here today, is presenting a policy that incorporates a payment option within the trimming. So in the policy you have before you, it basically has the same layout for the trimming process as far as we have the certified streets crews by our city arborist in proper trimming techniques. We go out, we notify, the notifications let people know what the standard is, what the policy is, and that we would like them to perform the trimming, and lets them know we'll be there. As we looked at options for potential billing, you know, some of the things that are obstacles within a billing system is just the logistics of doing the billing. It's, okay, so does the street crew get an address and then document the hours, and they come back, and does that get sent to finance or to ordinance enforcement, and does it have to be by certified letter in order to be able to bill people and to be able to levy a fee? There's a lot of those things that have to be worked through. As far as the billing amount, the vast majority of the sites that we've seen, we estimate about 95% of the sites that we trim take an hour or less. And when I say hour, many of those are 20 minutes or less. It's, we're pulling up, people have tried to get into compliance, there's a limb here or there, or they didn't quite understand what the site triangle meant, and we're doing some very minimal trimming. We wanted to avoid penalizing those people and really try and make it so that it's the ones where we have a disproportionate expenditure of staff time and resources and target those for reimbursement to the city for that time.
Tyler, I'm probably being argumentative, but the property owners are responsible for this by ordinance.
Absolutely, yes.
We're not penalizing them. We're doing for them what they are required to do. I understand the small amount of work part, I get it. But it's their responsibility, it's not ours. The city ordinance says it's their responsibility.
Absolutely.
And I think you've brought a good program to work the community, you know, in quadrants to try to get compliance. You and staff could work yourselves to death chasing the city attorney to get him to cut that limb, and he may never get around to it. But welcome to the table, Rod.
Thank you.
But it's, I don't see it as penalizing them to be doing for them.
I agree. I think that the thing that we considered as we formulated the program is we have to look at the reality and the logistics of operating the program. And so if the fee, say it is a $130 fee that's applied, which is based on a two-man crew and the equipment that they use, if we pull up to a place and it's a 15-minute location, A, trimming people's streets is something that they're not always typically super pleased to have done regardless, but by the time we run it through the process, it was felt that the monetary gain that the reimbursement the city might get, we might expend more than we're gonna get back.
Cost a little bit, then it wouldn't do the...
It's gonna cost more by the time we document it, it goes through finance. If, you know, Rod could speak more to the notification requirements, and then it goes, you know, the follow-up and potential liens on property, it seemed like we would be maybe opening a Pandora's box for not, you know, stepping over some dollars to pick up some dimes.
Now, just, that's why I came up, I was gonna talk about, you have to give notice to the property owner before we start the process of enforcement, give them an opportunity to care it before we come in and do it. And like Tyler said, probably costs a little more if it's under an hour than stuff that's a larger job, I think, than the...
But the process is laid out in the packet meets those necessary requirements.
Yes.
So we've come up with the amount, the dollar amount is based on our staff, like I said, staff time, equipment use. A lot of the equipment use is based on the FEMA equipment rates, and so it's a pretty recognized national rate. And that comes out to $130 an hour is what it costs for us to have a crew out trimming. And so that was, that's what is in, the current policy as proposed, and that was what we put together based on the request from the committee to come back with a billing option for the program.
What, let me, if, you're talking about the last bullet in the...
In the policy.
Right-of-way vegetation trimming policy, and you are verbally telling us... You're verbally telling us that that is a crew consisting of...
Two, that's a two-man crew and then the equipment necessary to...
Necessary for them to do the work.
Right.
Okay. Gary, I would think that if this is, if this is approved, it becomes a written policy, that the crew should be defined in that last bullet. In other words, you could put 20 people on somebody's yard and get it done in less than an hour, even if it was a whole lot of work. So I would personally like to see some definition of...
We could come up with...
What makes up, what makes up the hours worth of work? Are you talking about...
We could come up with a cumulative calculation.
Two men, a half-hour piece is an hour, or two men for an hour is an hour, that kind of thing?
Yes, sir.
This $130 an hour, where will it be? I mean, it's not in this policy, is this gonna be in the fee schedule for the city?
Yeah, the thought was that that would adjust as, you know, equipment rates, FEMA adjusts equipment rates, and as our rates for keeping our, you know, our employees are constantly adjusting. And so the thought was to have it passed based on, and set a fee and have the fee based on certain criteria that then change.
And then it would, we would look at it annually as we look at the fee resolution?
As part of the fee resolution.
Yeah, is this, this isn't included in the fee resolution at this point?
No, it is not in the current resolution.
So we would not be charging it until we open up the fee resolution?
Right.
Since it's a new fee, a public hearing will have to be held for it.
And could we do it before spring?
We could, and there may be additional fees that we look at as well, but certainly we would need to...
Should've stayed. No, I was looking for Rod before Rod was looking for us.
If you don't do it as a fee-based, if you can do it by reimbursement, because the city expends to do that, we can get that from the homeowner without it being necessarily a fee.
You could, you could put it in place by ordinance, and by ordinance, you can seek reimbursement for services provided, just as we have for our sidewalk ordinance.
Is that in the current ordinance regarding trimming or obstruction of...
I don't believe so.
I think it might said reimbursement, I'd have to double-check that.
There is something in there for obstruction of the sidewalk, isn't there?
Sidewalks, yes.
And so, so we could do something similar to that with this?
We'll have to research it and find out, but...
But right now, we're looking at policy and not necessarily tree-termin ordinance. I mean, that would be the difference.
Yeah, we can go ahead and take a look at it and bring back an implementation plan as well and give you some options.
I mean, I like the idea of having it because, you know, how many times do we go out there and we're just doing it because nobody else is and somebody's getting the good out of it, and it's not the rest of the city?
Yes, sir.
So I just had a broader question. It says that the city is divided into annual service areas. How many areas do we have?
For the purpose of this service and many of the services in the streets departments divided into four areas.
So that means once every four years, the crew will be around?
Once every four years, we come back around, yes.
Unless you get a complaint.
And, yeah, and as is called out in this, complaints, when it's not the year that is up for rotation, then those are sent through ordinance enforcement. And ordinance enforcement then runs through the process.
I'm okay with it. I mean, I would like, like I say, we don't have the dollars in here, but I wanna see something somewhere with the dollars in here.
What we wanted to do today was run the concept by to see if this was something everyone was okay with, and then we can put together an implementation plan to say, okay, this is how it happens, and these are the nuts and bolts of the thing.
Okay, so you're not looking...
So this doesn't necessarily need to...
For this to go on to council next month?
Okay.
So Gary, let's do those, at least three things that I can remember. One, better define what makes up the hour in terms of manpower and equipment.
Staff power.
And work out some way to capture that, right now, 130, whether it's through fee or the current ordinance, or does an ordinance need to be changed, or something to make it possible. I understand the more trouble to build than to do the work kind of thing. I wanna think about whether or not the hour is where I'd like to be on this. As I say, and the city attorney hadn't corrected me on this yet today, this is a requirement of the property owners by ordinance. We're providing a service to do it for them.
Yes.
Because we want the city cut. I mean, I've got some areas that I walk that you single-file to walk down the sidewalk, two of you, because two of you can't get through without one of you going through the bushes. So it's a good plan, it's something that needs to be done in whatever fashion we end up deciding to do it.
That's along the line also is snow removal, when people don't shovel their sidewalk and we have to come in and do it, we could actually bill them for that, too.
How do we do that? What's the billing mechanism for that?
We do, I think law enforcement provides, ordinance enforcement, they provide notification to the homeowner, and they put a notice on it and write a notice and tell them that they need to have it cleaned up or...
But do we bill it by fee?
It's done by ordinance.
The fee ordinance, or do we do it within the ordinance on the snow remove?
Go ahead, Stephanie, what?
I think we just write in the ordinance at cost.
Yeah, it's done through the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's an enforcement means.
Okay, so is it...
That's an option here, it sounds like.
Yeah, we don't, I would have to check to see if we've ever had to do that. Usually, letting folks know is sufficient. We had an issue about three years ago during a term of heavy snowfall. And at that time, if you'll remember, we actually got volunteers in the community to assist. But usually, they're contacted by code enforcement or the police, and people generally comply.
They get taken care of somehow.
Yeah, the other issue that you run into, it's not so much the snow removal, although that's a seasonal issue, it's broken sidewalks, things like that, that our ordinance puts the responsibility for repairing those sidewalks onto the adjacent property owner. There have been property owners come before you in the past, and typically, that's one of the reasons that we have a sidewalk program now, is the council's been reluctant to tell someone that, you know, if they have a street tree that's heaved a sidewalk, that it's the adjacent property owner's duty to get it fixed. So we've dealt with that in a different way. But we can bring back some options to you.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. Thanks.
Okay, thank you all. Okay. Scott Bontrager's got the pavement management program, the 2014 grind mix pave change order, speaking of things people find under asphalt in Moscow.
Or what they don't find.
Or what they don't find, as the case may be.
Good afternoon. Brought for you today is the change order number one and should be the only change order for this year's pavement management project, the grind, mix, and pave project. This change order comes to you associated with additional work that needed to be done out on the Adams Street section of the project, which was Adams Street, Third to A, and then the F Street portion, which was on F Street from Lincoln to Hayes. Both those stretches of asphalt, we found differing subsurface conditions or conditions where we had an existing concrete roadway underneath. And these particular...
Surprise!
Yeah, exactly. These particular conditions led to us having to strip off the majority of the asphalt out there and basically rebuilding large portions of the roadway, bringing in extra rock on F Street and out on Adams Street, basically digging it back down to subgrade and building up for a new roadway. But the change order presented to you here kinda lays out, in general, the work that had been done and what was being requested by the contractor to make up for the extra work that they had done out there.
Scott, how much roughly of that 21,350.69 was on F and how much was on Adams? I mean, those are the two streets we're talking about, right?
Yeah, probably about quarter to maybe a third was on F Street.
Okay.
The majority of it was on Adams.
Was on Adams.
Yeah, and Adams actually required additional work while we're out there. We installed a new water line on it while we were there. We also installed two new sewer manholes that were all brick manholes while we had the street torn up. So there was additional work that was benefited by having the street torn up.
Just an accounting issue through my inability to read spreadsheets as well as others, but it says 21,000 in the request, but then when we look at the original bid price, it's 6,600. It dropped the total change order to 14.7, but then we're back to 21 somehow. Could you walk me through that thread?
Yeah, with this change order, we also remove a bid item, bid item number four, which, that item was associated with the shape mix and compact of the asphalt grindings that were originally in the project. So the original scope of the project was to basically grind up the asphalt and mix it in with the base. Without being able to go through that process, we've essentially... process, we've essentially removed that bid item since that work was never done. So, of what's being asked in the change order, we're also removing bid item number four, which reduces the total amount that is burdened by this to $14,724.
So, change order one will be for $14,724.44?
It will be adjusted so that within the next payment, bid item number four will be removed, and change order for a total of $21,350.69 will be added. So, the net difference between the two of what the next payment will be, will be $14,724.
But your, your change order need, if you had, if you had bid item four in the original contract, you have to take it back out?
Yes.
By way of change order?
That's part of this, yes.
Okay, so it's not just a pay movement, it's a change order and then a pay? Am I... Looking for agreement, Les. Or correction, as the case may be?
Yeah, I think, I think you're on the right track, and maybe what's throwing us off just a little bit is in the CCSR language, it says it's a $21,000 change order.
Exactly.
The net is a $14,000 change order, because it's 21 addition...
Okay.
$6,000 reduction, or about that. So, yeah, the net change order will be $14,000.
What happened to the grindings?
The grindings, we have recovered a portion of them, and a portion that could not be reused by us has been hauled off by the contractor.
So, we are reusing what we can?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The original proposed work was to grind the asphalt off. When they do that, were they grinding down in to the base below it at, at the same time?
Yes.
And then, all in one pass, it was being mixed and put back? Is that, was that the original plan?
The original intent was to have it work that particular way. What happened on Adam Street is they ran into large portions of larger aggregate that it could not be mixed into.
Right, right. Process wouldn't work.
Yeah, and also a concrete street underneath a portion of Adams, that we weren't aware of.
Okay.
Oh, man.
Yes, sir. Anything?
No, I'm good, but I mean...
I'm good now. Okay, Gary, item five, can be moved to council, please, and consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, Les gets to come back up for a 409 South Jackson Street LLC development agreement. Better known as the EMSI project, sidewalk project, I guess.
Yes, EMSI site, sidewalk, or frontage improvements, and this is one that you've actually seen a couple of times.
Okay.
In going through the process, we brought to you some concepts about some cost sharing on improvements in front of EMSI, and then it has expanded to also look at some improvements in front of the building to the north. And so, I'll take just a minute and kind of walk through that, just so folks are up to speed on what we're talking about. The area we're looking at is on Jackson Street, located between Sixth on the south and Third on the north. This was the old Daily News building. That's how most people know it. It's now the new home of EMSI, and as part of that building remodeling and redevelopment for the new business, there was a Jim Grant applied for and received through the city to help deal with things like fiber installation to serve the building, plus frontage improvements along the fringe of that section of the street itself. And through...
The fiber ran up the alley from Sixth Street?
I believe that is the case. I think it came up the alley and came to the back of the building, and that is in place. So, the remaining portion is the frontage improvements along the west side of Jackson Street. In many discussions over the course of the last month or so, working with the owner of the building, Mark Wentz, plus the tenant, which is EMSI, we've been looking at how to make sure this project could move forward, potentially city participation and funding. As part of that discussion, we then kind of looked a little bit further afield, if you will, and said, well, would it make sense? And this was a discussion, I think, that happened right here.
Oh, more than right here. It was this gentleman right here.
This gentleman right here.
Full credit.
That said, well, what if we were to look at also including the frontage to the north in front of the Salvation Army complex in the building? And so, that's what we've been pursuing since that time. We have a new design that was essentially in addition to the previous design done by Hodg Associates for that frontage. It now includes the frontage of the Salvation Army up to their driveway. We have then also worked with Mr. Wentz and EMSI on how to package all of this, keeping in mind that those additional improvements would be funded through the city's efforts rather than through the developer. And carrying it forward, we've had to go through ITD, Idaho Transportation Department for approval. They've given us verbal approvals on the concept. They're looking at the plans right now. We don't have a written formal approval yet, but we're anticipating that shortly. We've, Gary has worked with the URA on the portion of the funding that is eligible for reimbursement under the Urban Renewal Agency Agreement, and the board has looked at that and given the blessing to that. I believe it goes back to the board later this week.
Final approval.
Final approval shortly, to get that agreement together as well. So, all that being said, what is before you today is a development agreement that I believe Gary worked up this last week. I was, I was away, so this one came together in my absence. But it addresses essentially the, the concept here that there would be improvements done along the frontage of EMSI with participation by EMSI and Mr. Wentz and the city to make the improvements that are outlined in the drawings and in the package that we've discussed previously. Within that, there's also a funding breakdown of how all that would come together. This reflects that with a few minor roundoffs on some of the dollars and cents. Essentially, we're looking at using the remainder of the Jim Grant funding, the $32,000 that's still there. We would use about $3,300 of pavement management program funding. That's a normal overlay and street maintenance type program that we do. Some out of the sidewalk program, that represents that 30% of sidewalk costs for the downtown business district that we've been doing within that program. A streetlight program, and that would be replacing some of the existing Cobra headlights with new LED historic district-type luminaires. Some labor by our Streets Department, representing roughly $4,400 for demolition of sidewalk and curb, something we do in our sidewalk program as a matter of course. Arts program, participation in the tree grates, the artistic tree grates that go under the new trees, and then some numbers here representing contribution by Mr. Wentz and EMSI. And these two are the ones that would be subject to the agreement with the URA on a 10-year reimbursement plan.
All things being equal, they would be reimbursed the 42?
Yes.
Okay.
So, grand total roughly $110,000. This does include some contingency dollars within that, and so, it may be that we don't spend quite that much before we're done, but you know how things can go.
Les, what was that bottom number, the last time we saw this?
Uh, it was, it was 89, I think, before we added, 86 or 89 before we added the piece to the north.
Can I talk about the stormwater detention catch basin that provides us some opportunities for savings?
Yeah, part of what happened here is the, the original concept was such that it created a location where the water that would be running, stormwater running down the curb line would, would pond, because there was nowhere for it to go due to the, the bulge out, if you will, going uphill.
Water running south down the west curb line?
Down the curb line, right, because the curb line would then shift out towards, towards Jackson Street Center, and it's running uphill, if you will, so you create a ponding situation. To avoid that, there was some storm work that had to be included, catch basin, some new storm line to get around that area. By extending the work to the north, we actually go up to an existing catch basin that's there near the driveway, and so therefore, we don't have to do that storm work. So, there is some reduction in cost with that, which offsets the increase...
Constantly a move.
Increase in cost on the, and additional work to the north. If that makes sense.
So, Gary, is this a $20,000 increase over what we had previously looked at?
Yeah, roughly. Again, is...
Is that not more than what we had?
No, I think that, wasn't that what we saw last week?
Was that what we saw?
That's what we're talking, yeah.
Okay, alright.
It's last week.
Maybe even a thousand less than we were talking last week.
Okay, 'cause I don't, I don't have the previous...
And there are some things that need to happen yet. As Les indicated, ITD still needs to put their approval on this. Mr. Wentz, once everything's in place, will need to discuss with his contractor, McCall's Classic Construction, in order to get it done this fall, and the reimbursement request through the URA needs to happen as well. So, a lot of moving parts, but we're really trying to get this done this fall if we possibly can. And as Les indicated, there's significant savings that we can have if we, if the idea is to move it north anyway, you'd just be jerking that catch basin out and, and moving it up anyway.
Well, we can, yeah, we can use, use the existing system rather than have to add new. So, the, the previous number was about $98,000, $99,000 with the, the original concept. And so, we, you know, we're adding roughly 10, 11, 12,000 overall.
Yeah, that's closer to what I thought we were doing.
Yeah, it's, it's an addition of about 24 or so with the, the added pavement and all that, but then the reduction on the stormwater side is a net change of 11, 12,000.
So, and just to be clear, if, no matter what, these improvements, would they, they would be on the city's dime if we didn't have this participation going on?
Yeah, there is, there are no...
If we were elected to do it?
If we were elected.
Yeah, there are no public improvements associated with EMSI remodels. So, this is a desire of the developer to improve the street frontage, and of course, if we can take advantage of that, and that's what the URA is there for as well. So, it really is those three entities working together. So, answer to your question is, yes, it would be totally on the city's expense.
Um, Les, I'm looking at the spreadsheet, and I just now saw this. How many luminaires are there in the new project?
I believe the total is three.
I think there's four. If I'm looking at the, if I'm looking at what I think I'm looking at.
Yeah, there, excuse me, there are four. There are four total.
And it appears that you've got three on the spreadsheet.
If you look in the second grouping of columns, you'll see a city quantity.
The second column is the, okay, so it gets a total of four?
There's the fourth one, right. Three in the original, and then we added one with the, the addition.
Okay.
The extension.
So, the city quantity, the second one is, that's not the changes?
That is the change.
That's the plus and minus change?
That's correct. So, if you're looking there, for instance, under the stormwater, you'll see a minus num, minus value, negative value. That, that's the reduction of those storm items that would not have to be built, and then additional trees, additional luminaires, etc.
Yes, sir.
I'm all for it.
Yes.
Somebody, somebody bright come up with that one, didn't they?
Brilliant.
Brilliant idea.
Do you want a plaque on the sidewalk?
Oh, maybe. Maybe later.
Brilliant. We had another luminaire out there. Brilliant. Um, can it go consent?
It can.
Okay. And we will do that. Thank you, Les. Okay, that concludes the itemized, or the listed items on the agenda. We now have some reports. Oh, one question, one comment regarding the previous item. Has Jim Grant Boise been advised what we're doing?
Yes, Elise has been in contact with them, and it's a go.
Okay. Alright. Mr. Palmer, would like to open the FY 2014 budget for reasons...
Yet to be discussed.
He will explain to us. We took in a lot more money than we expected, and we got to raise the budget, right?
Actually, no.
Darn.
Normally, we open the budget for those exact reasons, but in this particular time, we had a council decision back in April to increase the amount of funding from the Hamilton Fund for the Joseph Street Playfields. This is the only recommendation...
Due to the high bid price that we got?
Correct, the $369,000. Now, there's a substantial likelihood that this, because they're gonna, the contract says that we're gonna roll this into November, that the 1.5 might be sufficient. But because of flexibility, I'm recommending just to roll the entire amount into the open budget process, so of 1.869 million. So, that's my recommendation. You know, rather than try and guess where the percentage of completion might be through November, my recommendation is to roll the whole thing. The, in the 2015 budget, we have some of those same funds in the budget at $750,000, if you recall. So, I don't know where the construction season's gonna end, or, you know, things that crop up and delay the project. So, that's the maximum amount of flexibility we could provide.
So, this is the only item you have?
This is the only item I have.
The current budget for our participation in the cost of construction of the playfields is currently how much?
The amount of...
In 2014?
Oh, in the 2014 budget is 1.5 million.
Okay, and you're proposing that that be raised to 1.?
1,869,517 dollars. It will require a public hearing on Monday, so that's why it's a report.
Tuesday.
Or Tuesday, excuse me, thank you. And there will be an ordinance involved, and that's in the packet as well.
And if, and if the work, well, the work won't be completed by the end of Sept, by September 30th, we know that.
Correct.
Do you have any money in the budget for 2015, or how do we get that money moved across the...
We, in anticipation, in the resolution that we did, or the memo that I did amending the budget packet from the pub, uh, workshop into, what was the date, August 4th workshop, I had included the $750,000 into the 2015 budget, so it is covered very adequately.
So, with, with this, we will have budgeted $2,505,000 in 14 and 15 combined?
No. We are budging $750,000.
But we're not gonna spend it. I understand that, but...
You've got appropriation for it.
For $2,505,000.
Well, you're not going to expend it in 2014.
But we're fixing the budget for it, as if we might, 'cause he doesn't know when the bills will come.
So, what doesn't get budgeted will carry over into, we budgeted to carry over into next year?
That's correct.
Okay. And are we gonna have to, at the end of 15 reopen to say, this is how much we carried in, or, or, you know, if we decide, you know, if we don't spend it all and we decide to put it back into the Hamilton Fund?
I'll give you a scenario, a couple scenarios. One is we could spend the 1.5, and we need $369,000 in 2015. Of the 750, 369 gets spent, and then the other 400 stays, just stays there as, uh, unbudgeted, or unappropriated, well, appropriated but not expended funds.
What happens to those?
They stay in the...
They just stay in the fund, stay in the Hamilton Fund. It's only for that specific purpose.
So, those funds can't be captured and put somewhere else?
No. No, not at all. It's a special, oh, well, special purpose fund, a particular fund, so.
Questions? You, you had trouble understanding the debit and credit on the street project, and this you've totally got? Come on, Ross.
The man is clear as well, water.
Okay, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Counsel's agenda. Public hearing?
Well, actually, it doesn't even that. It's just a report, isn't it?
Yep.
Well, no, he wants it on the Monday agenda, right?
It's already on.
It's already on.
It's a public hearing. All he's doing is giving you an update.
Yeah, okay. Tim Davis is going to talk to us about single stream recycling, and I would, woo, boy, don't want to, don't want to, I don't want to do anything to tell you how to do your presentation, except tell you, assume nobody knows what it is when you start, would you?
Yeah. Do you want me to set it? Okay. Well, I'm not even sure I know how to...
Where's Bill? He knows.
Yeah, where's, where's Bell nap when you need him? Stay ready, Bill.
This is an engineer.
There we go.
There we go.
Alright.
What is single stream recycling?
I will talk a bit about it. I first wanted to thank council for giving me a full year to put my time toward the new...
to put my time toward the new roll cart program, which I needed to do, and I appreciate that very much. Told you I would come-
Love them to death.
Come forward with some information on single-stream. Source Separated, which is currently what we use in Moscow, of course, requires sorting of recycling material into separate containers and placed at the curb for collection. Some folks use up to three or four different containers. It's then sorted by the collection folks into a truck that has a number of different, um, collection compartments within it. We're pretty much limited at the, the quantities and types of materials that we can accept at the curb because of the limited compartments on that truck. The difference between source separated and single-stream is, single-stream requires no sorting. We generally use a roll cart.
By the producer of the recycled material?
Correct. All the material goes into a roll cart. It's stored, wheeled to the curb on collection day. It's collected by a single-compartment truck. Potentially, it could be done with an automated truck like we're using with the roll carts. So, it could, could just be a one-man operation ultimately. Once the single-stream material is collected, it's typically bailed and shipped to a material recovery facility, facility, short-term for it is a MRF. City of Moscow residential curbside currently uses a source-separated method. Curbside recycling program here in Moscow was initiated in nineteen ninety-eight and implemented in April of ninety-nine. Curbside collection is done by LeTas Sanitation Moscow Recycling through our franchise agreement. LSI Moscow Recycling retains the revenues from the sales of the recycled material that is collected. Moscow Recycling Center processes an average of thirty-seven-hundred-and-thirty-four tons of recycling material annually, of which fourteen percent, or five-hundred-and-twenty-four tons, is collected at residential curbside.
So-
The difference is at the recycle center?
So, they're getting thirty-two-hundred tons down at the recycle center?
Some of that is accounted for. They have a commercial collection of cardboard, which is, it was just a big part of it, too. But ultimately, about forty percent of all of our recyclables are dropped off at the recycling center. Fourteen percent is picked up at the curb. That was kind of surprising.
Yeah, I thought it'd be more.
Before you leave that, go to, regarding bullet three, whether you count from the top or the bottom. LSI Moscow Recycling retains the revenue from the sales of recycling materials-
Correct.
And the city pays LSI for collection-
Correct.
-of the curbside materials.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, we'll talk about some statistics here that I was kind of surprised by. Moscow curbside recycling participation rate is only about twenty-five percent, based on a seven-week survey, survey that was conducted by LeTas Sanitation Moscow Recycling this summer. They were averaging about fourteen-hundred set-outs per week of about fifty-four-hundred-and-ten residential accounts that have access to curbside recycling. These, these numbers indicate that the recycling center is used more heavily than curbside services, and it basically told me that residential curbside recycling particip, participation has a lot of room to grow. Curbside recycling is not currently available to apartment units in Moscow, and I ran some numbers and found out that we had four-hundred-and-sixty-five apartment complexes with a total of thirty-nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight total units. So, apartment complexes offer a potential for single-stream curbside recycling services, which would likely increase tonnage considerably. Yes?
I've got one. About your twenty-five percent, it says fourteen-hundred on weekday, but I know in my case, I don't generate enough stuff to put a bin out every week, and so I'm kind of hitting it every other week. So-
And some folks are gone in the summer, too. I just wanted to get an idea.
So, the participation rate might be higher. It's just, on a weekly basis, this makes it look lower than it actually is. So, caution there about the-
Well, this was a seven-week survey, so he talks you on the days you put it out.
Oh, well, in my case, I feel all good.
In his count.
Every other time.
Yeah, and every other week, though, because he's showing fourteen-hundred people per week using it. Well, if you're fourteen-hundred this week and then you get fourteen-hundred the other week, you're actually got twenty-eight-hundred households altogether who participate, just not on a weekly basis.
It might be two thousand.
Yeah.
And a seven-week survey isn't real scientific, but it gives us kind of an idea what we have out there.
We're still spitballing.
Yeah. Sounds low.
Yeah. It does, but-
And another reason, the apartment complexes, there, there are a lot of them throughout the city, and the, part of the reason, I suspect, that it hasn't been offered there is we'd have four million of these little containers around there, and they're really kind of, a lot of them are, you know, they, they don't have the space. Where if you've got some large roll carts in there, they've been doing this in Pullman for a number of years, it, it works, it works pretty well.
Well, I think there are a few businesses, and Andy will shake his head or nod it, but he does do this with, they do some single-stream stuffs.
Yeah.
Smaller apartment units, fourplexes and smaller that don't have dumpster service can participate at curbside.
Why don't you repeat that, so we caught that?
Um, why don't you come up? Andy, introduce your name, rank, and serial number, please.
All right. Andy Boyd, rank Colonel, serial number oh-three, no. I am the Operations Manager for Moscow Recycling and LeTas Sanitation. Andy Boyd. Just, we are collecting some apartments, you know, initially, Tim is correct. We couldn't have, you know, forty-two-hundred bins sitting out at each apartment complex. So, basically, when the system was put together, they set it up so that fourplexes or smaller that are on the garbage can service are able to use the curbside program, but the larger units are with dumpster.
So, they have the green bins-
Right.
-at the fourplexes?
Correct, if they choose to.
The duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes-
Could have them-
-then have and use the green bins.
If they have garbage can service.
Anything larger than a four, don't get green bins?
Generally not, no.
So, I wanted to talk about some of the pros and cons that, that I've observed in looking at different systems around. The obvious pro is convenience. There's less time sorting. There's, you know, they don't have to think about it. It all goes in one bin. Single roll cart container, it requires less space, and probably a smaller footprint at the curb, I would suspect, than somebody using two or three of the smaller containers, unless they're stacking them. It gives us an opportunity to collect a wider variety of recycling materials at the curb, because we're not constrained by compartments and that type of thing. It's easier and faster to collect the materials placed at the curb, because it can be collected with a semi-automated or a fully-automated collection truck, like we're currently doing with the roll carts for the garbage end of it. The curbside recycling could be offered to apartment units. And then the communities that have single-stream recycling love the convenience. Everybody I spoke to that has this type of system, their, their customers love it. And many of the single-stream recycling programs that I've looked at realize an increase in not only participation, but tonnage due to that convenience. The cons are the costs. We have increased processing costs with single-stream. Typically, what happens is this material is sent to a MRF, and they charge a processing cost, and I'll get into that a little more as we move along, which directly affects the revenue.
Now, right now, we sort at the truck, and it's sent off sorted-
It's bailed separately.
-to some end user who isn't having to separate.
Correct.
Okay. So, you're adding another level of handling.
Correct. And then the quality. Typically, you see contamination generally increases. Glass can cause a number of problems. We've talked about that a little bit, both in separation and contamination issues, and it also lowers the marketability and the revenue further. Disposal costs for contamination can also increase the processing costs further. Quality is directly related to marketability of any recyclable material, whether it's single-stream or source-separated. And I put a little note there on the bottom, the economy and the markets. And during the economic downturn back in two thousand and eight, there was a number of municipalities in this area that were paying forty to sixty dollars per ton, up and above that processing cost, just to have a processor accept that type of material. So, the markets do play a role in this, but typically, when you see the markets go south, all the markets are south. But when they're blended like this, and you're paying that processing cost, you, you are a little vulnerable.
So, what do they pay when it's not a economic downturn of two thousand and eight?
It varies. You know, the markets change from month to month, and I'll, I'll show you a slide of an example of how Republic Services deals with Pullman's single-stream, and it'll kind of give you a breakdown.
Just while we're right here, what are we paying for just transporting to the waste site of regular garbage per ton?
Right now, I believe it is in the-
To the waste site, we're paying?
Forty-seven dollars, if I remember correctly. It's mid-forties. I believe it's forty-seven oh-four a ton. So, these processing costs that I've been talking about will likely be in the seventy-five dollar per ton range. And like I talked about earlier, these costs will affect the revenue that the franchisee currently receives for the commodity sales. There will be some additional cart costs, and then there will be some costs for advertising and promotional costs. If recycling commodity prices, prices fall below the cost of processing, who accepts that burden? And I did find one model in Cootney County where they were able to contract with a processor that accepted a zero-floor price. And what this means is that in the event that the recycling commodity prices fall below that of the processing price, they would accept that material for a zero-floor price, meaning that Cootney County would get a zero net income, and they would still have to get rid of that material.
So, in their, in Cootney County's case, there, and I'll just plop that on here with that, Moscow Recycling would collect from the, from everybody. We would pay X dollars for that collection, the city would. If it dropped below, and that X dollars didn't cover it-
Somebody has to burden that.
They're, they're, they're eating that until the market comes back up. So, so they could store it onsite until the market got better, too. I mean, if, if that's what they chose to do.
If they had the space to do it, yes.
I don't know if Cootney County has the space, but I know we don't at the moment.
I suspect Cootney County doesn't either. And then I just wanted to talk about a few of the regional programs that I looked at. And they vary. The revenues and the contracts are a little bit different with each community. Pullman Disposal is a private company, and they're regulated by the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission. They bill directly for garbage and single-stream, and single-stream is included in that garbage rate. They retain a hundred percent of the net revenues from the sales of that recyclable material that is collected. City of Spokane, their contract-
So, the city of Pullman has no cost for solid waste or, or recycle? The residents do, but the city does not?
Other than their own, I would suspect.
Other than paying for their own dumpster?
Yeah, Pullman Disposal bills their residents directly. And they're regulated by the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay.
So, rather than, I, I'll get it.
Then the city of Spokane, of course, is a municipality. They collect materials similar. They bill for single-stream, which is included in the garbage collection rates. They retain, retain seventy-five percent of the net revenues from the sales of their materials, and twenty-five percent of that net stays with their processor. And just a side note, the month of April, the city of Spokane received ninety-eight thousand dollars, just over ninety-eight thousand dollars in revenues, but paid their processor a hundred-and-five thousand for a net loss of seventy-two-hundred dollars for the month of April. Spokane's a little different animal. They're paying over a hundred dollars a ton for the waste energy plan up there, and I think they can absorb those losses when the markets aren't, aren't up where they need to be. So, that's the difference there. City Lewiston has a franchise agreement with Sunshine Disposal for garbage and single-stream recycling collection. City Lewiston bills for those services. Sunshine Disposal performs collection of single-stream recycling and retains a hundred percent of the net revenues from the recycling material.
Tim, when you say that they bill, when they bill for single-stream included in garbage collection rate, there's not another line on the utility bill for single-stream?
No.
Every, everyone that has solid waste collection gets a bill for that, and they get given a, I think these cities all use the roll carts.
Correct.
They get given a solid-waste roll cart of their size choosing, and they get given a single-stream cart of whatever size the system calls for.
Yes.
Whether the city's dictating it, or they're requesting a particular size.
Yes.
And I think in Lewiston, they also include the yard waste collection in that garbage section of the bill, as well as people being able to drop off at Clearwater Composting their yard waste.
Which, we, in our garbage bill, pay for recycling collection and the convenience of whatever.
Your curbside recycling collection is included as part of your garbage collection rates now, and all three of these-
The Lewiston one's pretty similar to ours.
Yes.
Other than we don't know about the recycling.
This was a sample I was speaking of. This is a breakdown of Pullman's material that's sent to Seattle to Republic Services, MRF over there. And this is the March market prices for each commodity. You've got cardboard, newsprint, mixed paper, and on down the line. And what they do in the sampling is they break open three to four bales, each container load that's sent down there, and they break it apart, and they, they come up with a characterization, and they determine the whole load is that same character. So, you've got fourteen percent of the OCC, which equates to twenty-one ninety-five, and then on down. So, at the end of the day, that total load was worth a hundred-and-nineteen dollars and fourteen cents per ton, less the processing costs, and then you get a net revenue of that, forty-five seventy-five. And that's kind of how it works. Questions on that?
So, and I don't, I don't know how close you are to that, but I can see an increase in tonnage of, well, increase in participation is gonna increase the tonnage, and is that gonna, if not, if not just be a wash, as far as what may be, well, obviously, you're, even though they're dinging you for the glass and the residue, they're still making some, some money off of it, so-
Some months they are, some months they aren't. This is just a one-month example. For instance, I just got a, a price list from Republic today in an email, and I think cardboard was down to a hundred-and-ten. Is that right?
So, there's that, there's that, too, the market fluctuations.
The markets fluctuate every month.
In two thousand and eight, when we had the, you know, the decline, you know, cardboard went from about a hundred-and-fifty to thirty-two dollars a ton.
Wow.
So, that gives you-
But also, if you can get more participation from the large apartment complexes and things like that, the amount of tonnage of trash you're sending to the landfill is going to decrease as well.
Yeah, that's the other thing that I'm looking at as far as-
You're saving it on the other end. It's, it's-
Now, Tim, if you're up there on your chart, if they did not take glass, which you've said contaminates the bundles, they wouldn't have that-
They'd save-
...loss, but their processing fee would be, be less?
Processing fee remains the same.
Why, okay, if-
Still looking at residue from the other container.
Well, the residue's still there, but-
The residue's there, the glass is still there. They get a negative charge for their glass, just for handling that. And again, what I'll say is, it's not the glass, it's the broken glass, and there's no way to bail that material without breaking.
I understand that. But, so, if you didn't have the glass in there, is what I'm asking?
Your net would be a hundred-and-twenty-two something a ton.
And your processing fee would be the same?
Processing fee stays the same.
Okay, so they're collecting it in the negative number. Okay, I, I got it.
Exactly.
Good. Another accounting lesson today.
Yes, there you go.
And then quality- And then quality control, that was one of the cons that I spoke of, but material quality and contamination levels are directly related to the following factors. The level of promotion and education that is given the program, whether you have a volume-based garbage collecting, collection system in place, which we do, whether glass is included or excluded from curbside program, the quantity of different materials that are accepted, and whether collectors can visually inspect the material before it's dumped into the collection vehicle.
With an automated rig, that's going to be a little more difficult.
It will be.
Actually, not necessarily. We're looking to potentially change over to this Corrado can system, which allows us to see what's going in before it goes into the truck.
They've tested that a little bit on the roll cart system, and essentially what it is, is it looks kind of like a dumpster that's packed on the forks of the front loader, and then it's got a little arm off to the side that just dumps these roll carts, and the driver's looking right in on it.
So he's doing in front of himself instead of behind?
Instead of above him.
I saw something the other day, and this is just a quick question and looking for a quick answer. I happened to be walking up the street behind a roll cart emptying truck, and noticed at one particular house, when he put that cart up, he stopped, and then he shook it before he put it back down. And I was wondering if he had a camera or a mirror or something where he could see that it didn't come out, and I need to get it out of there? Or was that just his hand slipped and he hit the trigger several times?
He do have a camera.
There is a camera. Can't totally see inside the whole dumpster, but you can see, like, sometimes if a bag, occasionally a bag will get hung up in that bar on the inside, and he'd be able to see that hanging, so he shakes it a little bit to get it off of there.
Okay, so that would explain why, possibly why he shook it, was he realized he hadn't gotten it empty?
That, or in the past, we've had to go back there because they stuffed the stuff real hard, so you kind of remember those go-backs, and you might just say, well, I don't want to come back here again, and you kind of learn your problem stops, so to speak.
No twelve oh two Cherry Street really packs it tight, huh?
And part of the problem early on was that was such a new vehicle that they couldn't adjust any of the settings to do that in the very beginning, to where now that it's been out there and loosened up a little bit. I think they're able to adjust some of those things. And then I just, I put down some discussion points, and I also sent these questions to Andy because I wanted to get his take on it, but can the single-stream process be conducted at the current recycling center, or should it be pursued at another less urbanized location? And how would a single-stream system affect expansion plans at the current recycling center? Viability of the current drop-off recycling system at the recycling center, and would that go away? And then the impact to LSI, and will local jobs be lost? And I can let Andy speak to his answers, and...
You're going to let him read the ones he said?
Yeah.
Okay, so the biggest impact on LSI would be improved efficiency in collection. Right now, we currently require two employees, two people on that truck to get it done. Sometimes it still takes them eight or nine hours a day, even though our stops aren't that huge, and, you know, and that just has to do with the fact that every stop, you got to run back and forth on the truck, putting the stuff in the appropriate compartments. You know, with the automated system, if we went to a side-load or a Corrado can type of system, you know, we would be down to one employee, and obviously we can collect it significantly faster per stop. You know, the other impacts would be just capital costs, such as the totes, new truck, things of that nature. We, you know, as far as any jobs potentially being lost, we perceive maybe one job would be lost because that one individual wouldn't have to be in that truck. However, we, you know, with, until we go that route, we may be able to reassign that person into something else. So I don't want to say for sure, but it is possible one job might be lost.
What do you use personnel-wise at the recycle center to empty that truck? It goes to the recycle center?
Right.
How do you empty that truck? By hand, or is it automated, or what?
Basically, each compartment gets emptied out, so we, you know, the truck will back in, you know, for all the paper, it gets backed in and dumped on the floor in the appropriate spot in the recycling center. In between each dump, you got to come out and weigh it. The glass, the tin and aluminum go into a bin that you can just put behind the truck, it dumps into that, and then that goes into the appropriate spot as well.
The truck can dump the individual compartments?
Right, each door opens up as you're going along.
Oh, okay.
So that's how that works.
So there's not as much labor getting it out as there was getting it in?
Right, although again, with this, you know, in single-stream, it's just back in once, dump it, and you're gone.
Okay.
So, I mean, that would, you know, make that process a bit quicker as well. Let's see. Can this process be conducted on the current recycling center site, or should it be pursued at another less urbanized location? We can do this at the site we're currently at. Our biggest issue down there is, is storage, you know, and Tim and I have been talking about that. You know, moving it to a less urbanized area, I think, in general, would be a good thing. I don't know if it's necessary, but, you know, just, we still get noise complaints because being that it's open 24/7, you know, still have people dropping off glass at three in the morning, and so sometimes people in the surrounding areas do hear that, and they'll call us and say, is there anything you can do about that? So, you know, from that standpoint, yeah, but, I mean, you know, the other question would be is if somewhere down the line...
You're not going to empty this truck at three in the morning?
No, 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 absolutely not. You know, the other question would be is if at some point we decided we wanted to try and sort the single-stream ourselves, you know, we don't really have the economy of scale to make that extremely lucrative, but there are some cheaper ways of doing that where we, you know, maybe we don't separate everything, but a few of the commodities we can separate out so we can maintain more control over quality and things of that nature, and gain more revenue back out of that material.
Do you have to have a baling machine you don't have now?
No.
You have a baling machine now? Oh, okay. And it would take the volume?
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem at all. Viability of the drop-off recycling program, I wouldn't see that going away since already 40% of our material's coming in that way. If we stop accepting glass, you know, that's another reason why people may still want to come down to do that, and Tim and I had actually talked about if we were to stop glass, you know, maybe putting a few more drop locations around town for it to make it as convenient as possible.
Stop taking glass at the curbside.
At the curbside, yes, sorry. Thank you for the clarification. So...
Just trying to keep up.
All right, now you're doing a great job. So that's my initial answers to those questions, and be happy to answer any more.
You don't see any showstoppers, do you?
You know, the only showstopper is marketability of your material, making sure that it's as clean as possible. You know, when we, in 2008, when we had the downturn, the economic downturn, because all of our stuff is source-separated and we usually work with local markets, we had no problem getting rid of any of our material, which was not the case with a lot of other places.
With the single streams done.
Yeah, because a single stream's harder to get rid of. A lot of it gets shipped overseas, and when that happened, China stopped taking a whole bunch of stuff, and so because we didn't ship overseas, our materials were able to move. The mills where we send our materials are familiar with what we produce and the quality of it, so those are things that we need to keep into consideration. Quality is, is key.
You said something earlier about taking things you cannot take now because your truck doesn't have enough compartments. Does that mean my coffee plastic can that I forget every time I finally go through one, not to put it in recycle, can go and recycle?
Well, it could go on the curbside. I mean, currently, you could take that, right, yeah.
On the curbside, but it won't be, it won't be left in my green bucket anymore?
Right.
Okay, just checking.
And a few other plastics as well. Plastics is where you gain the largest increase in what you can take, depending on where you send it. Certain places take more.
Because cardboard is cardboard, you take that.
Paper's paper.
Paper's paper.
Yeah, we probably have to stop taking shredded paper at the curb, you know, because currently they just throw that in a plastic sack, and then we empty that out at the center when it gets dropped off, but generally in a, in a commingled system, they don't like the shredded paper because how do you shred it? Is sorted, it just kind of...
Yeah, okay. Questions?
So when do we start?
I guess if, if you'd like to, you know, keep pursuing this, I'll keep going on it. Obviously, we won't know what our costs will be until we put together a formal proposal to LSI and work through a few things, but...
Yeah, and I don't know if it, I guess, Gary, how close are we on to the, getting a city survey out?
We will put it out this fall. It's within a month, two months.
Because maybe that's a question to ask in it, is would, do you currently use curbside recycling, and would you if we did this?
I would check past surveys as well, because I think we've asked that question in the past.
If we've asked it before, yeah, I think that the...
Not that it's bad to, you know, ask it again, but it gives you...
Be able to track it. And it may be one of those ones that's always on there.
Looking pleased.
No, no.
You're looking concerned.
I need to just look and see what's been asked in the past.
Right.
Would it, is it, is it a good question to ask without providing an explanation of what it means?
Well, that's part of the problem, is how much information do you give? I mean, I don't think there's any doubt, I mean, even judging by the council, the more convenient the recycling, the better people like it. You've heard some of the downsides today. They aren't, they aren't showstoppers, but they're definitely things that you need to be concerned about, and there will be a cost associated with it. I don't think you're going to see a lot of people who would be against curbside, or excuse me, against single-stream recycling, but they'll want to see the bottom line. So I think Tim's comment about if you want to proceed with this, which is obvious that you do, we will continue to, to evolve and get some better estimates for you, and then you can decide, just as we do with roll carts.
And also with a larger look at things about that which is going into the single-stream recycling, ain't making it into the regular trash stream and using that information as well, so not just the costs associated with the single-stream, but also the offset...
What's the savings?
There, and that's one of the things that we've talked about in the past, too. The more that you people pay for, to get rid of garbage.
Right.
And if you recycle, typically you don't pay to get rid of recycling. The collection, yes, but there is a net effect to the solid waste program, and that needs to be estimated, and...
Okay. We, we need to let the engineering guys come up and give us a quick tour of what they've built this year. Gary, let's do this on this topic. Move it forward within staff. Let's, unless you've got some reason to say we don't want to do that or we can't do that, let's move it forward to a, to a proposal.
Okay, we'll continue to work on it.
To a package proposal on the, on...
Okay.
And I would, I would personally say one that does not include glass.
Yeah, see, you know, how much difference that would make.
And I've kind of thought through the concept in my head, and I've visited with Andy a little bit. We both have enough years out there. I think that we can come back with some sort of plan and choices and show you how a system might look and be designed, and if that's something that looks...
And what it would cost to taxpayers rate-wise.
Exactly.
Thank you both. Thank you, Andy.
Thanks.
Mr. Bondtrager, have you all built anything this summer that you didn't find concrete under?
A few things. Some things we added concrete on top of.
So we'll just take this as the abbreviated process and just kind of show some pictures of what we had accomplished this year. So one of the first projects we started with was the Hatley Way sidewalk improvements, which out there, we basically ran a new stretch of sidewalk from the mall frontage down towards U-Haul to make a connection between the mall.
This is looking south from the gravel driveway toward the sewer plant, across the highway.
Yes, yes. So this is a before picture. This will be an after picture of that portion of the connection. This would be looking northeast towards the mall before, and there's the new sidewalk that runs in ADA compliance, making the connection up essentially to the mall frontage.
Kevin, did we ever get our bush at the end of the sidewalk?
I don't think so.
Can we?
Do you have one we can put there?
Probably. Do I need to buy it?
It'd be helpful.
Kevin and I had a discussion about the continuation of the previous sidewalk down to nowhere, and I was lobbying for a barrier, which didn't win the argument, but I heard comments that, well, there could be a bush down at the end to show that you can't go that way. I was just wondering if we got a bush, that's all.
No, not yet.
Okay.
So the next one up was the 2013 pedestrian curb ramp improvement project. This was the first one where we got a grant applied through the state to basically fix pedestrian ramps on the state infrastructure. So I have just a couple example pictures from what we had. This was the before. This is on Washington and First, before and after. So we fixed, you know, the ADA compliance with these.
I think you all are doing a great job with these. I just hope this doesn't become the before picture in 10 years, and you're showing us what you did to change it.
Yeah.
Some of them aren't even that old.
Yeah, yeah, some of them aren't even that old.
Here's another one on Main and C Street, just the difference of how code compliance has changed. And here's the, the 2014, you know, essentially did these both the same summer, even though we applied for the grants in two different periods. So here's down on Main and Suite. This is right off of the bike path, the northeast corner there, just by Domino's. Before and after, making that connection, we actually widened the portion that came from the bike path and widened it on the other side, too.
Really cleans it up.
Yeah. Here's another one on the southeast corner of Main and Steiner. Before, they were single drops like this that were non-compliant for wheelchairs rolling up, and they did not have a appropriate-sized landing at the top, whereas now with the different style, they are more directional for the direction that people need to go, and also have appropriate-sized landings where they can roll up onto. Next one, the one we just basically discussed, was this year's payment preservation project, the Grind Mix Pave.
Adams and, Adams and F?
Adams F, and this is the Line Street portion of it. So this is line between the highway and A Streets up at the top up there, so that's before.
I have to say it, you really think that needed some work?
Yeah, just a little, yeah. Funny thing is, this one, we only ground off two inches, and below that two inches, it was fine, so this is a two-inch inlay from what we ground off, and that's the difference. It's got a paving fabric in between to help keep it, uh, keep the water out from seeping into the subgrade. This was before on F Street Hill there, as you get to Hays, and this is the after, while they're still out there moving the paver. And this would be on Adams Street. This is adjacent to the 1912 Center on Adams. And then I've got an after picture further up. This is the intersection of A and Adams, but general what it looks like, you know, brand-new thermoplastic, brand-new roadway section through the whole area, and...
Adams was a lot like cutting hair, wasn't it? You didn't know where to stop?
Yes.
Everything you did showed you something else?
Yes, and also didn't help, too, with, you know, the additional work of adding the water line and other things, you know, tore up more payments, so we extended the limits to cover what had been done for those, too. But yeah, once you got into it, it's difficult to know when to stop. This one still is in progress, is the North Polk Water Loop Connection. This is adding a water loop out there near the intersection of Public and Polk, extending further up to where it makes a connection back into where the water line ends, south of Rodeo. So this is kind of start of the job, where they're out there digging the trench and everything.
Where, where, where are we?
This right here is a picture, pretty much, yeah, Public, looking north.
You can know it, okay.
Mm-hmm. This was prior to the intersection having to be closed. The intersection was closed for about a one-to-two week period. I think it was two weeks, three weeks. There, there was additional work that had to be done out there that wasn't necessarily anticipated with the amount of utilities that had to be crossed in that intersection. But this is kind of what the guys were out there dealing with on a daily basis. A lot of the times, the trench was actually, had a large amount of water seeping into it, too, just because of the water level there. And this is the after, after things were paved back and everything out there.
I should know this, contractor or city crews?
That was Gomer Construction was the contractor. Moscow Sidewalk Replacement Project, this is our yearly sidewalk replacement projects that we have for both commercial and residential uses to increase efficiency and reduce costs for anybody who wants to join the sidewalk program. Here's an example over here at, in front of Martin Otto. This is the before, well, during construction. And here's the after.
And this was us?
That was us who did the tear-out.
Okay.
And then the pour-back was done by Knox. Knox Concrete is our, this year's sidewalk program contractor.
It was paid for by the owner. We, we contributed 30%.
Participated.
Yeah.
This one was on us. This is the police department. It was, you know, again, another really broken-up, vaulted everything through the sidewalk.
You didn't find any additional wells under that, did you?
No.
Like you did on the other side of the building?
No, not on this, not on this portion of it.
Underwater well on the other, under this side.
Water rates?
Well, it's, they're using it to monitor it.
And this is an after picture, so that's... And this is an after picture through that section. They did a really good job, too, of keeping everything from breaking off on the stucco or anything like that. And?
Les, could I ask you a sidewalk question while they just did a sidewalk thing, please? I notice around town that apparently, when you may have had an intern do some review of the status of sidewalks in town, they also marked some that some days somehow need to be repaired or replaced, it looks like. Is there any thought to approach those property owners and tell them the city's program for doing private sidewalks? I mean, there's a couple on White Avenue, one of which is a great bicycle jump if I was still an eight-year-old and had a bike, because it's kicked up, it's marked, somebody's marked it with white paint. There are some others that, you know, they look like someday markings, or is that part of the program? Maybe Kevin knows.
Yeah, that was a defect that we found, that we sent a letter to the property owner asking them to repair it, and that was marked for removal, so-
So by being marked, y'all have contacted them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And explain the fact that we do help, and we can provide our pricing and all this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great job, Les.
Don't be a millionaire if you have that.
And here's some pictures of the project that Tom Gudmund had presented earlier. This is where we're going to be coming in and tearing out this portion of the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center's parking lot there, just directly north of the swim center there. So that is the largely alligatored section through there that has more than likely been seeing subgrade failure from saturated subgrade.
Is that a storm drain I'm looking at?
That is a storm drain, of which we'll be tying in the new underdrain pipes to the storm drain.
So you're going to put underdrains under this on the premise that it's-
That it's going to help drain the subgrade.
Subsurface water that's eating up your pavement?
Yeah, and we've been out there actually post-terrain storms and actually seen the amount of water seeping into the drainage structures through the subgrade. So, yeah, the ground is wet there, and this would be the portion where you guys were discussing that four-foot-wide section. There's actually a lot of three-to-four-inch-wide cracks out there that to get in a paver, you need to widen it out to about four feet to get a half paver down there to actually do it right.
So this is not a three-foot-wide failure strip?
No.
It's a lengthwise crack?
Yes.
That you're having trouble getting enough tar in?
Yes, exactly, and the amount of infiltration we get from water seeping through that. That's the end of what we got. We've had some other small projects here and there, but it's the majority of the construction projects we had.
You had, I think you were the one that asked for this, Art. Any questions for them, or does this answer your question?
Well, it does.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
I think we're good.
Thank you, gentlemen.